All right, six o'clock, let the call our regular village board meeting to order. All please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Hi, President Mark.
Here.
Trustee Nurekka here, trustee Lee Jones.
Here.
Trustee Slus.
Here.
Trustee Hudson.
Here.
Trustee Bowden.
Here.
And trustee Sterba.
Here.
All right, public comments. Where you can speak. Yes.
Thank you. I'm not good at doing this at all, but I'm really sick to my stomach for having to, but I live on Main Street.
What, I'm sorry, what's your name?
Roxanne Santori.
Okay.
And I live next to a rental. And I've been trying to contact the landlord and at his business and on his cell, and I'm not getting any return calls. And it's just very frustrating because we've had this issue in the past with the same situation. And now my husband's passed away, so I have to deal with this by myself. He's got a tree in the backyard that I've asked him multiple times to please cut away from my yard. It's now on top of my garage again, and the squirrels are eating my shingles and my wood. And we've already repaired the garage once, he did. And, you know, that's not in my wheelhouse. And I keep calling him, and I even offered to call A and R, just call me and let me know it's okay. No return calls. And so I called the village earlier today. And Stacy sent me up with Bill to come and look at it tomorrow. He also has his electric line sitting on top of my garage, which needs to be raised or moved. And I just can't get him to call me back, so I don't know what else to do. So I'm just here looking for an answer.
So, Bill, our code?
I'm a ceiling, so I'm not aware of this conversation.
Yeah, so we'll have our administrator talk with him and try to figure this, see if we can help you some way to get this resolved.
I would like to see if I could have him stop by after I get off work tomorrow. Because I know she told me he was off today, so I left him a message to call him tomorrow.
Right. Okay. Yeah, we'll have the administrator, why don't you, do you have her contact info or anything? Can you email your information to the administrator? So just go, it's this admin, A D M I N, village P O T O. Yeah, she'll get your cards, see if we can talk to you.
Because they're chewing into it now, so they've already got in there before, and we had to repair it.
Okay.
You know, I'm all for having extra properties and everything, but if you're not going to maintain them, you know, for your neighbors, then it's very frustrating.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you very much. So.
We'll see if we can help you out, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Yes, sir.
Just get up here.
Yep.
Oops, excuse me, got some brace. Hi, I'm Warren Osperen. We're the, I'm half owner in the property on the west side of 57.
So, Warren, just, so is this in regards to the travel center?
No, in a way it was this that, you know, they were on our ground and stuff, our kind of said, which, all I care is, we need a better communication. So all they had to do is kind of, you know, come and ask us. We could have worked out an easy agreement or dip, work something out. But, yeah, so and the props weren't planted and everything, but I'm just saying, I think we need a little more communications. We're, you know, right on the other side, and there's a lot of rumors maybe about us, but they're rumors, so I just want to clear that up.
Okay.
And then with the travel center, I just wanted to ask, if we do have trouble, do we go to the owners or do we come to the board?
Well, you, I would think you'd start with the owners if you have an issue, and then, you know, if you can't resolve it between private parties, then you come to us.
I just want to know where we stand and what we're doing, so, and then I had to let her come tonight, so I missed the last one, so.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments?
I got nothing this week.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We just have two items, the minutes from our June 27th meeting and the payroll and accounts payable. Payroll for the pay period ending 6/25, total of $54,786.76. Accounts payable for the period ending July 8th for general fund $54,844.41, and from the business development district, $48,840.41 for a total of $59,728.45. Are there any items that trustees would like to remove from the consent agenda? If not, okay, obtain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Slus, second by trustee Nurekka.
Can you roll call both trustee Slus?
Yes.
Trustee Nurekka?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Bowden?
Yes.
And trustee Sterba?
Yes.
Great. On to our staff and committee reports. Angie, you want to?
So we have completed our flushing in Peato. And I'm working on getting a date to get the water tower painted. So we've reached out to the contractor that will be painting. I just need to get the date that we're going to start. I think it's going to be beautiful this week, so I'm hoping that we're started and will on our way before our next board meeting. If that's the case, I will mail you and let you know when we're going to start. So I anticipate it being early soon, so we're going to start with the tower on Lincoln.
Oh, okay. I was going to, I mean, the communication tower that we, that the fire department and everybody's got to move, you guys set that under control?
Yeah, I think, well, engineering was kind of working with that. I had just reached out to get, to see if I could, you know, help get some contact in for me and get it moving a little bit. But the last report that I had, I think that's completely taken care of, so.
Okay.
So that's all I have.
Questions?
Any questions? Okay.
Thanks, Angie.
Yep.
All right, we had an administrative oversight committee meeting last week.
Yeah, so we met on the 29th. The main purpose of the meeting was really to start reviewing our investments with the three, two banks in the investment house that we've got the Aqua Money, lack of a better word, at, and then also some of the recommendations that the financial consultant put forth as far as consolidating accounts and cleaning up our books. You know, we kind of have some fresh eyes looking at what's going on. And so we met with all three of the banks and the investment house. Still waiting for some better proposals from the other two banks, but we did get a nice proposal from PFM, and so we've got that money being laddered and starting to earn some much better interest than it has been. So basically, we're just trying to get this money invested. Rates are up, and we're just trying to get a better return on that money so that we can use it to jump a lot.
What kind of return can you get, Pat?
I think we're going to average between the shorter duration of like 2% and the longer duration, almost 3%.
That's pretty good.
Yeah. And we're only out, yeah, we're only out, I think.
A year.
A year. Yeah, so we laddered them 90 days, six.
180.
180, I can't do math. 270 and 360.
So three months, six months, nine months.
Yeah, and so as those, so we talked about maybe just putting it all in one year, but then they came back and said, well, you know, interest rates are still going up, so your 90-day money may actually get you more money, so. They were good to work with. I think we were all pretty happy with that meeting, so they offered some pretty good advice.
What's the total of what we've done invested?
PFM's got six-ish, and then I think the other two banks, two and something and three and something, just rough numbers.
That's about 12 total.
12, yeah. And then the different general fund accounts are, we're going to kind of start consolidating those and get those in a revolving money market. Try start getting some interest, because right now it's just dead money just sitting there.
That'll be pretty good chunk of money.
Yeah, and when you bundle it all together, it turns into a decent number. But right now it's in this fund, this account, that account, that account, so we're going to pull them all together.
Good.
Yep. All right, moving on, administrator.
Um, no, nothing really, other than my, what's in the packet.
Okay. Engineering, Charlie?
Not much to update for the railroad street project. We're waiting for Nycor to relocate their line that is very shallow, so we'll continue to work with them. I know the mayor's trying to push them along as well. And then the MFT project, hopefully we'll get that starting in the next few weeks. We have pre-construction meeting on Thursday, so both the contracts are good. Get it back to Ida, and then they'll get a start date going.
And we saw the sidewalk, got the crosswalk done and the lights.
Yes, so that's pretty much done right now. Yeah, just punch lists and restorations, something they have to do.
Good. Any questions for Charlie? All right, there's no police chief report, Public Works, I don't see anybody here. Treasure, she told us she would have a quarterly report by our next meeting, so we can look at how we're doing against our budget. I don't have any comments. We're going to move on to new business. The first order of business is a public hearing on a proposed first amendment to the previously entered into annexation agreement with the then current owners and developer of the proposed Truck Travel Center, Bagwadi Properties One LLC and Sioux Hospital, including a redevelopment agreement, which is part of the first amendment. So I just wanted to read a, kind of a summary, you know, so there's a lot of, you know, words in here, and hopefully you guys have a chance to look through it. But I had our attorney just kind of write up a summary of what, you know, why are we doing this? Why do we need an amendment? So I'll just go ahead and read this. So the annexation agreement providing for the annexation of the parcel of land west of I-57 at the northeast corner of 88th Avenue and Wilmington Peato Road for the development of a Truck Travel Center was approved three years ago in July of 2019. So actually, that should be the northwest corner.
Right, northwest.
Yeah, okay, I don't want to get anybody confused, okay?
Northwest corner.
The start of the project was delayed primarily due to the need to make improvements to 88th Avenue and I-57 interchange at Wilmington Peato Road, which are the, called the road improvements. Designed for these improvements required IDOT and WILDOT reviews and approvals, as well as obtaining 50 feet of right-of-way from the property owner west of 88th Avenue. COVID shutdown contributed to the delay in completing the process. Also, since the adaptation of the annexation agreement, the developer has closed on the purchase of the land and acquired title to it. Passage of some three years from the adoption of the annexation agreement has caused the need to amend the agreement to update the project construction and financial schedule deadlines of the agreement. Also, due to the IDOT requirements to improve the I-57 interchange, financing and construction obligations for the road improvements has changed as well. So what are the significant changes? Number one, the site and development plan have been updated and will provide for the development in two phases. Phase one to be the Truck Travel Center, and phase two to be the freestanding hotel and freestanding restaurant. Number two, the village, rather than the developer, will bid the construction contracts for the road improvements. Number three, the village will issue TIF revenue bonds to fund the construction of the road improvements. The village will not be required to make the road improvements until, number one, the bonds have been issued, and number two, the developer has completed all the site improvement work and site infrastructure. The developer will be obligated to pay the village each year any amount necessary to pay the debt service on the bond that is not covered by the real estate tax increment for the year. Number four, pursuant to a redevelopment agreement between the village and the developer, there's part of the amendment, the village will reimburse the developer only from available TIF funds for eligible redevelopment project cost to a maximum of $11,768,478. Okay, so that's the summary. What we'll do is kind of follow the public hearing procedure. I will be swearing, anybody who wants to talk will be swearing you in. So we will start with the developer or his representative, if you'd like to say a few words. Do you promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. My name is Hal Frank, F R A N C K E. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Melzer, Pratil, and Stell. My office is at 1550 East Woodfield Road in Schaumburg. And I'm here this evening on behalf of the owner of the property that we're talking about and the proposed developer, Bagwadi Properties One LLC, and Sioux Hospital, who's the manager of the limited liability company, who some of you, hopefully all of you have met. He was here at the beginning when the original annexation agreement was negotiated and executed, as the village president said, pretty much three years ago. And so Sioux has is the builder. He has, he has hung in there, stuck it out, and as was said in the attorney's summary, we got a couple of curveballs thrown at the village and at Sioux has in the form of these IDOT improvements which need to be constructed, and then COVID. And so the TIF district that the village established, it was established as tax increment financing district. It was established back in August of 2019. That has a statutory limit of 23 years. So we've already lost kind of three years in doing all this. As was said in the, in the summary, there are a number of provisions in the annexation agreement that need to be adjusted, amended. That's why we're doing the first amendment. There are all sorts of start dates and finish dates that now needed to be adjusted. The original annexation agreement didn't contemplate these improvements at I-57 that are now being required by IDOT and WILDOT. So we needed to amend the agreement to provide for that. And I think those are the main parts of the annexation agreement that needed to be looked at again. And then in addition, as the village president said, was always contemplated that there'd be a TIF redevelopment agreement executed for this project. And again, just to be clear, what, you know, what the village has done here by establishing the TIF district is provide a mechanism for reimbursing the developer for extraordinary and what the statute, Illinois statute calls eligible redevelopment project costs, which but for the public assistance with the project wouldn't happen. And so that's what the redevelopment agreement does. It provides a mechanism for reimbursement to the developer of these project costs, eligible project costs. The obligation is 100% nonrecourse to the village. The bonds that the village are, is going to issue to build these road improvements, you know, is, it's backed up by the, these tax increment dollars. As was stated earlier, we negotiated a provision into the agreement that if, for whatever reason, the increment in any given year, the increment is to be used to pay off principal and interest on the bonds. And we've put in a provision, Mr. Patel has agreed to put in a provision that if there's any shortfall in a given year, to make the payment on the principal and interest on the bond, that he will make good on that out of his own pocket to make up the shortfall. The key difference, again, in recognition of the delays that have taken place and the intervention of COVID and the delays with the road improvements, needless to say, a lot has happened in the hotel industry over the last few years and travel. And so the original agreement contemplated one project, one phase project. The hotel has not been able to get off the ground. There's been great difficulties in finding financing for new hotels these days, although I do believe in Sioux has will tell you it's getting better. But at the end of the day, you know, another reason for this first amendment to the annexation agreement was to acknowledge that it really is going to be a two-phase development. He is gung ho and ready to go on the Truck Travel Center. He wants to get the shovels in the ground and the site work underway this year. And hopefully, we'll be open for business with that by late next year. There's a commitment for phase two, the hotel, using his good faith efforts to try to get that underway by the end of 2024, I think, yeah, 2024. And, and he's, you know, he's eager to get that part of the project done. He's incentivized to get the hotel done, because if the hotel gets built, that means there'll be more incremental real estate taxes, which will increase his likelihood of getting, you know, that incentive back, that developer incentive. We know that the village wants to see the whole project built. The village, I know, wants to see the hotel built. The village, as you all know, also created a business development district back in August of 2019, and the village imposed what are called special business district sales and hotel taxes. So the village benefits if a hotel is built because of the generation of sales tax, hotel tax, the restaurants, all these different commercial opportunities generate revenues for the village. And like I said, and if it gets built, it enhances the likelihood that he will be receiving what he's negotiated for, which is, if he doesn't get, he becomes very disappointed. So, so he's incentivized to get this hotel off the ground too. So I think, you know, that's our summary of why we're doing the amendment to the annexation agreement, why there is a redevelopment agreement on the table tonight. I just, I'd like to take this opportunity to say, well, for those of you who were here back in 2019, I was not, you'll know I was not. I just came into this project maybe a year or so ago. And I just want to say, we've been working a lot with your attorneys and with the village administrator and the village engineer, and everybody has been great. Everybody has focused a lot of time and energy on this project. And we're looking forward to it being a fantastic project for the village and for our client. And so Sioux has, who knows more than anything about the details of this project and the potential for the project, he's here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so board, you have any questions or?
So I thought, are the restaurants coming with the hotel, or are they in phase one?
The restaurant, restaurant within the travel center is, is like there's a three, you know, quick service restaurant. It's part of the travel center.
Yep.
So it's coming with the travel center. And the freestanding restaurant, it will be, you know, some end user that once, you know, I see the development going, you know, there'll be all the infrastructure and the site work will be done as part of the travel center.
Okay.
So does the hotel. So the hotel, even though it's not, you know, getting off the foundation or the ground, there'll be about, you know, significant amount of underground infrastructure work will be done as a part of the site work for the entire site.
So you're still putting all the infrastructure in?
All the retention ponds and all the infrastructure utilities, fire hydrants, you know, the water, sanitary sewer, everything. You know, the curbs, even the parking lot, we are also doing the binder course on the hotel area. And everything else, you know, will be 100% done.
And then, when do you think that the travel center are open? If you don't get hung up by us or anybody else?
If we start, you know, within reasonable time, within next four weeks, if I start it, I think it's very possible that by next fall, it will be open.
Next fall?
Yeah. You know, if it gets more further delayed, that I run only have like 60 days before I close for winter, then it might be 2024 opening. So that's why I want, you know, I'm ready from my end to get started as soon as we get, you know, okay, you know, all the formalities are done, you know, all the permits and this agreement in place, then, you know, I'm ready. You know, your financing in place, and I'm ready for it, so.
Are you comfortable telling us how much you're investing in phase one and then phase two? Roughly?
I mean, the phase, phase one, it's the travel center and all the side work. It's about $17.5 million. You know, that has some of the land acquisition cost, but if I back those out, we're still looking at about $16 million.
$16 million, okay.
And, you know, I will probably will have, you know, close to, you know, $6.5 million of my own money in this. The other thing is, you know, because of all these delays, you know, every, you know, six months, year, I mean, I wish I would have done this in 2020, when everybody was looking for work, you know? I got scared too at the same time, because of the hotel and everything, you know, and, and I started this, you know, back in January of this year, you know, we did our site plan and, you know, got everything with IDOT, and we knew exactly what needs to be done, you know, 88th Avenue and everything. And then I went out for bidding, and so I have those numbers in order for you, you know, in order for me to finish the project, I have to start with my budget first, right? And then I take it to the bank, and then bank look at it and then approve my, my package. So based on the February number, and, you know, my financing was approved in early, like mid-May, okay, based on the number that I had in February, and these numbers are changing every week, okay? So right now, I'm looking at about $1,000,500 from my own money, because I cannot go back to the bank. Otherwise, it will take another six months. You know, they have to do the appraisal, they have to justify the cost increase. I have to put everything now, it's a moving target on the cost. So I logged that number that was given to me in February, and anything extra that I'm signing the contract to all of these people, I'm putting there on my phone. So that's why it's even harder for me, you know, to get this going, and sooner is better, you know? Every, every, every two weeks, you know, I'm sure, you know, Troy would say, you know, what is the cost, you know, ongoing cost every, like every two, three weeks, every month, you know, the engineering costs, you know, the materials are going up, same thing with the building, the steel, you know, everything's like, in the underground tanks, right now they have eight weeks of, you know, I used to get a, they usually have underground fiberglass tanks, but they have 52 weeks of lead time to do the fiberglass tank, which is impossible. So I'm using what they call is a dual wall tank. So outside is a fiberglass, so it doesn't get corroded, and inside is stainless steel. And they have more manufacturer making those tanks, which are also as good as the dual wall fiberglass. So I'm using that to cut down my time, which is still have like 24 weeks of lead time. So I have to make sure that those tanks gets into the ground before we get into the winter, and that's why the timing is very important.
Other questions?
As far as just the site development, do you think you'll be able to get that completed this year and then be ready for the building next year?
No, I want to start the building too. So because it's a massive site.
Together.
We can start from one end, you know, at least get the building bed ready and maybe get off the foundation while we work on the other. It was, this was a three, four acre site, it would be hard, because then people will be on top of each other. Because it's, you know, we have, it's a bigger site, I think we can still play out, and I, the plan is to get as much as possible. We don't know, you know, I, I think it's very, very possible we might not have a payment in, but we will have all the infrastructures and the curbs and, you know, things, you know, before the winter. And I want to get the building erected, you know, by mid-December before we call it off, you know, for winter. If we get on the roof, then we can still working inside. So that's the plan, actually, so.
Originally, when this was a one-phase project, and we had projections of the different revenue sources the village would get, now that it's broken into two parts, what's your projection on how much money the village will generate each year off of just the truck staff?
I think, you know, the.
I get that, I don't have that handy. We broke it down, though, we provided the village, I don't know if the village administrator has it, we provided a spreadsheet that shows the revenues from just the Truck Travel Center. I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have it from some of the others. I could look it up, I'll bring it up quickly.
So we had our TIF consultants, you know, rerun the numbers. And so let's see. They have projected that, you know, by 2025, which would be when, you know, hopefully the building will be done and be, you know, it takes a while to assess the building and then, you know, get the money. So, I mean, they projected revenues are going to be like $1 million, 1.1 million a year, so. To the village. To the village, correct. And that'll go towards helping pay back our, you know, road improvements. And, yeah. So that, we were, you know, we wanted to make sure that the village isn't going to be left, you know, holding a bag on these bond payments or anything. And so they really fine-tuned the numbers on that, and they seem to think that it's still a good deal for the village, so. And I just want to say that, you know, I, our village attorney, especially Terry Bartle and the EDG Group. And I just want to say that, you know, our village attorney, especially Terry Barnacle and the EDG Group, which is our TIF consultants and the administrator, have spent a lot of time on this since January. You know, multiple meetings. I sat in on a few, trustee Hudson sat in on a few. And I really feel confident that they have, you know, that they've gotten the best deal for the village. And that, you know, this is going to be a positive project for the village. And, you know, the biggest thing is, you know, we got Aqua to get the water and sewer over there. So we're hoping that this is going to be a snowball effect, that we're going to be getting, you know, more development out there. Any other questions for Mr. Patel? All right, is there anybody, any, anybody from the public want to ask any questions or present any evidence at all? If not, go ahead and close the public comment portion of the hearing. Do I need a motion to do that?
Yeah.
Close the public hearing.
Yes, do I need a motion to close the public?
No other persons wishing to add?
Big motion. Second. The move by trustee Hudson, second by trustee Jones.
Okay, roll call vote, trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Maravka?
Yes.
Trustee Slus?
Yes.
Trustee Bowden?
Yes.
And trustee Sterba?
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on to ordinance, ordinances then. Ordinance number 22-13 will be an ordinance authorizing the redevelopment agreement between Bagwadi Properties One Truck Travels, Truck Travel Center project. Need a motion on that?
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
The move by trustee Bowden, second by trustee Slus.
Okay, roll call vote, trustee Bowden?
Yes.
Trustee Slus?
Yes.
Trustee Maravka?
Yes.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
And trustee Sterba?
Yes.
Next would be ordinance 22-14. This is the ordinance authorizing the First Amendment to the annexation agreement for the Truck Travel Center project.
Motion.
Second. Move by trustee Slus, second by trustee Hudson.
All right, roll call vote, trustee Slus?
Yes.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Maravka?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Bowden?
Yes.
And trustee Sterba?
Yes.
All right, the next item would be an ordinance 22-15. This is ordinance approving a final landscape plan and variations from the Peatone zoning ordinance for building height, number of stories, front yard setback on the northwest corner of Wilmington Peatone Road and 88th Avenue. The planning and zoning heard this at their meeting in June and approved all of these. And so we need a motion to approve their recommendation.
Motion.
Second. By trustee Slus, second by trustee Jones.
Okay, roll call vote, trustee Slus?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Maravka?
Yes.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Bowden?
Yes.
And trustee Sterba?
Yep.
Item C is a motion to approve the Village of Peatone, Lauderbach, and Amen LLP engagement letter for, these acronyms, GAZK 75-0B. So what that means is, so Lauderbach is the firm doing our audit this year. In the past, if you may recall, when we've had an audit, we've had, I believe they called it an exception. Is that what you call it, or a?
Yeah, a qualified opinion.
A qualified opinion.
Of our financial statements.
Because we have a liability from insurance that we offer retirees. So some of our retirees, we pay for part of their health insurance. So that creates a liability that in the past, we've never really quantified. And so when we've had audits in the past, that's been an item that says, you know, we don't really know what this number is, so we can't give you an opinion on that. So it's been recommended by our auditor, by our financial consultant. We go ahead and engage a actuary to give us a number so that that can be included in the audit. It gives us a cleaner audit as we're going to be going out for bonds for this, you know, road improvement site, 57. We want to make sure we have a clean audit to show to people who are going to buy these bonds, so. That's also a good time to do it, since we changed auditors. Correct. And it's been recommended previously. So I need a motion to approve that. I'll make that motion. Second. Move by trustee Bowden, second by trustee Hudson.
Okay, roll call vote, trustee Bowden?
Yes.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Maravka?
Yes.
Trustee Slus?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
And trustee Sterba?
Yes.
All right, questions of press? I don't see anybody here. Any other correspondence from the board at all? Let us take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
By trustee Slus, second by trustee Ravka.
Roll call vote, trustee Slus?
Yes.
Trustee Maravka?
Yes.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Bowden?
Yes.
And trustee Sterba?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.